All right. Good afternoon, not evening. I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. It is 4:03 and ask that everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Boddy. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Present.
Ms. Lilge.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Present.
Ms. Moore.
Present.
Mr. Richardson.
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez.
Present.
Ms. Williams.
Ms. Willis.
Present.
Or Miss President.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, next on the agenda is any additions to the agenda? There are no additions to the agenda, but I do want to point out to our colleagues, an amendment to the agenda under new business item B in the recommended motion there, we are going to postpone to a later meeting. Just cross that out. That brings us to public comment on agenda items. That brings us to our superintendent's annual evaluation, which I need a motion to go into closed session.
I'm moving to move one to closed session.
Ms. Williams, can you do me a favor and read the motion as printed? Sorry. It's okay.
The Board of Education wants that thing to go closed session. Uh, just want to add, maybe add to the A to the C or A to the D evaluation.
Yes. Thank you. It has been moved by Ms. Williams and supported by Ms. Moore. And for the record, the superintendent did request that we convene in closed session, which we will do with our facilitator, Dr. Green. Are there any questions or comments before we take a roll call vote? See and none. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Dr. Boddy. Dr. Kavanaugh.
Yes.
Ms. Lilge.
Yes.
Mr. Lopez.
Yes.
Ms. Moore.
Yes.
Mr. Richardson.
Yes.
Dr. Rodriguez. Ms. Williams. Ms. Willis.
Yes. Motion passes eight zero and at 4:06 we are in closed session. evaluation. So we are going to continue on with our agenda, which brings us to our first presentation of the evening, which would be Dr. Sue Wheeler with our health and wellness update.
I have some slides for you, so I'm just, I know you enjoy my slides, so I.
Yeah, we will give our tech team just a moment to get those pulled up, but we do have a hard copy at our station.
Right, exactly. Laurie will put it in a.
In a safe, safe spot.
In a safe box.
Okay, well, good evening. I'm here tonight to share the monthly COVID report and a brief, brief for me, year and health and wellness report. And it looks like the agenda is long, so I will try to just scoot right along. She's asking me if my mic is on? Yeah? Yeah, it's on. Okay, it's fine. There we go. We are continuing to enjoy the reduction in COVID cases across the district with only 22 student cases reported across the district. Sheridan Road had a small cluster of cases with six reported for the entire month of May. The staff cases were also unbelievably low with only 10 cases reported. This represents the lowest monthly cases reported since 2021. All good. If we look at the year in review, you will see we had 670 total student cases and 333 staff cases for the school year. The combined total is just over 1,000 cases district-wide since September. You might also notice that we started very high in September and have had very low numbers for the past two months. Many people have asked me, what helped? What helped keep our COVID numbers low? Why did we come in so high in September and then things got better? Well, this is a combination of factors, including a clear, consistent COVID management protocol that was combined with evidence-based mitigation strategies and our ongoing testing program. We did it all. We also have district-wide participation in mitigation, prevention, and containment, a really great buy-in by staff and students alike. In addition to COVID, our health and wellness team from the Office of School Culture has had a busy year. As you heard last month, we've launched the Student Development Program with a goal of providing an academic and athletic advantage to all students in grades six through 12. We have a well-designed program offering tutoring, sports-specific skills and drills, speed and agility training, strength and conditioning, and perhaps someday's the favorite, a warm, hearty meal. We are averaging about 400 participants each week. At the last meeting, several people were wondering about the configuration of the weight room, which I have brought you a picture here tonight, so you can see our, our really state-of-the-art strength and conditioning room. The center continues to develop many partnerships from MSU to LCC to SEDEXO to the Eastside Community Action Center and many, many more. We are actively pursuing additional partnerships that are in alignment with our mission to enhance both academics and athletics. This is Alex, our trainer from Impact Sports Performance and one of our regular students. You know, I love this photo because it really shows both the student and Alex at a very common, you know, low-key way to go, kind of keep going. And of course, dinnertime is a favorite stop for many. Beginning June 12th, we'll have our summer program with programming from 11 to 5 each day. Students can sign up for one session or more each and every day. And with the help of SEDEXO, meals will continue too. Another exciting health initiative this year was the BIPOC Care Closet. This was made possible by the small grant from the Health Equity Council of Ingham County. This free service provided personal care products with an emphasis for our students Black, Indigenous, and people of color. The closet was a huge success. We filled 1,505 requests for products and we represented every single school in the Sadly, the care closet has closed for the year, although it's reassured me that I do not want a career with Target, okay? The community response to the care closet was overwhelmingly positive with many calls, emails, and social media posts, such as this above, thanking the district for this innovative program. For example, one poster said, "This is an amazing help. You are giving either struggling parents, working parents who may need extra help, teenage students whose parents may not or cannot provide these items. Thank you, Lansing School District." This year, we also increased our participation with the Vision to Learn program and provided eye exams at 11 schools. There were 708 eye exams provided with 481 pair of glasses provided at no cost to our students, a very productive year. At Everett High School, our school nurses Connie Smith and Kelly Line created the Everett Peace and Inclusivity Garden. They partnered with Brandy Jones and the Star Grant, Ms. Laurentina Harkness and her AP Environmental Science class, Ms. Pamela Collins and her art class, and Ms. Kish, Ms. Allison, and Ms. Neubauer with the GSA organization. This was really a unique, cross-departmental project that has been a huge success. This is a photo of our proud gardeners. When you are near Everett, it's worth the drive to check out the beautiful space they created. They have also peace posts and brand-new fencing. It's just beautiful. Four of the gardens are vegetables and flowers, and then they made one flower bed that is for pollination. So it's really a great project. Additionally, this year, we were pleased to be awarded the Health Resource Advocate Grant through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Service. The grant was initially designed to provide COVID resources and support, but has since expanded to cover many health and wellness initiatives, including medical assistance, student development program trainers, health educators, many, many opportunities throughout the grant. We have been invited to apply for a grant renewal and hope to again participate with this great program. This spring, the Office of School Culture has been exploring options for mental, emotional health screening tools and programs. We're reviewing evidence-based tools and systems with a target date of fall of 2023 for implementation in schools across the district. This is a brief, often four or five-question assessment that helps us notice and connect with students who may be having mental or emotional health concerns. Another new project that is underway this spring is the Care Connect 360 Project, again a partnership with MDHHS. This is a pilot program that will allow our school nurses to access the web portal to improve continuity of care and help with the coordination of care for students with chronic illnesses such as asthma, diabetes, and seizures. We will be the first district in Michigan to participate in this program, and more information will be coming in the fall. Of course, we continue all of our ongoing health and wellness initiatives behind the scene, updating and improvements with our health and sex ed curriculum, offering programs and services related to new state requirements for dental screening at school, hearing and vision screenings with the Ingham County Health Department, immunization management and monitoring, co-hosting Medicaid signup events, sports physical events. We've expanded the walkers program and hope to continue to do that in the fall as well, as well as maintaining our comprehensive school nurse program with a focus on prevention, promotion, and community connections to help keep our kids in school. I appreciate the opportunity to collaborate with the district with such a strong commitment to health and wellness. It's a pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you. And Dr. Rodriguez.
Thank you. Thank you very much to, for the presentation. And you are using the word wellness, and that is very incorporating many, many things in that word.
Yes.
I would like to ask, how many physical education teachers do we have in K to three? How many we have for three to six? And how many we have, how many educational teachers, physical education teachers that participate in the program of wellness?
Yeah, I, yes.
I don't need the answer today, but.
She'll be able to better answer that than me.
We have an answer.
And maybe I could say quite a few.
Thank you for that, Sue. The, we do have quite a few. I don't have the count with me for DIFL, but I want to say we are at least at 10, if not more than that.
Okay. Then maybe that is something we need to have the presentation about, and how many students, how many hours, and the whole program.
Yeah.
And the second question is, do we have health schedule or health classes in the high school or in other places?
Oh, yes. Yes, we do. And that's when we talk about updating and improving. Any changes that we make to the, that we would like to make to the sex ed curriculum we would bring before you, you know, in order to do that? The health classes, we take into account what's mandated by the state to provide and then what the board requirements are as well. Yes, we can provide that to you, too.
One thing I'll add is, we'll certainly get you the numbers of the number of PE teachers, but of course, within the health and wellness section and the director, she oversees, you know, nurses, MAs, this whole program. The physical education program is through the Office of Schools, so it's, it's separate. But what's really nice that we're looking forward to next year is as we create those K eights, there's going to be enough kids in each school to have more full-time PE teachers who won't have to be itinerant. One of the things that's pretty hard is you do PE one day at one school or half a day, then you have to travel. So as we start building the entire program for each of the K eights, as well as our schools, we're seeing more individual people being able to be full-time at each school. But I welcome the chance to share the number of not just PE, but dance, but really all of our DIFL folks, because it's a multiplicity of supports that we do. So thank you.
I have a question. You talked about the socio-emotional learning, mental health awareness for Target Fall date of 2023, about a four to five question assessment. Is that going to be an anonymous survey to students? Or how are you going to actually do that with the students so that they feel safe? Because that's a big thing when it comes to mental and socio-emotional awareness.
That's a really great question. And part of what we're doing, really the main focus of what we're doing right now with Director Black, we are meeting with various people who have tools, assessments, and we're learning what is out there, what's available, so we can take all of that into account and make a good choice for what will best serve the purpose. Yeah, we, we definitely understand the, the nature of how that is with students.
You're not comfortable creating a four to five question survey just based on the interaction you've had with the kids, because I think our population is unique and different, and to use something else that's not going to be what a, what a good reflection of our district is. I mean, it's four to five questions. How would, I think that wouldn't be hard for us to create knowing that the things that we've experienced in the last two to three years.
Yeah. And the reason that we want to see what's out there and hear what evidence-based tools are available, we don't want to just select four or five questions that we think would get at what we want. We're looking at what has been tested, what has good data behind it to tell us that what we think those questions are getting, that we have evidence that that's the case. So, you know, may end up that we'll do some hybrid of a couple of tools, but we want to be thoughtful about that. I don't know if you want to add anything?
Analytics.
Yes, for analytics that we, you know, at, at first glance, it seems like, well, I know what I want to ask, I'll just ask these four questions. But you really need the analysis of that to know, is that question asking what I think it is? And is this data going to be useful to us?
Okay. Same thing for your Care Connect 360 Project. How are you going to identify those students? Would that be the health survey that they turn in at the beginning of the year?
That would be part of that. And the health, the Care Connect 360 is a Medicaid-based system, so we will also be provided, here are students who have been identified with asthma, diabetes, seizures. And of course, this would be a parental consent to join into this project.
Okay, so you said Medicaid-based. What if the student doesn't have Medicaid, though?
Then they would not be on the Care Connect system. I mean, unless Dr. Boddy has, yeah, that's, you were, you looked like maybe you had something there. Yeah, they, it would just be strictly the Medicaid insurance providers. Although that represents a large percentage of our student body, so, you know, this will still be a very useful tool for us.
Ms. Williams, specifically what CC360 is a database owned by the state that lists all the claims to Medicaid, so that's, that's why it's only, so if somebody receives services and they claimed Medicaid to pay for it, then it'll show up.
Yes.
That's how you're able to see it. Ms. Lopez.
Yes. Thank you. Do you have data as to services by student groups, not group, but by gen, not gender, but ethnicity and race?
Do we provide health services?
I mean, do you have data in terms of serving each of the student groups by that?
Yes, yes, so that we can collect that data. Do you mean like, for example, what percentage of students might have asthma?
Native Americans, you know.
Yes, we could get that.
You know, Asians, you know, all that.
Yeah.
And is there a trend? Is there a trend? Do, do you have any trends that you know of?
Yes.
Of some groups needing more services than others? And how we're meeting those?
Yeah. I can tell you overwhelmingly, the biggest trend is those living in poverty and often have low access to healthcare. So if I had to select what would the biggest factor be that impacts students' health and wellness, it would be the impacts of poverty.
Okay. That'd be, that'd be nice to have, because we can then talk about that more. Thank you.
Any other questions from colleagues? Ms., Dr. Wheeler, I have two questions. The first one is the grant that we received from the Health Equity Council for the BIPOC Closet, is that something that we think we'll receive again, or was that a one time?
Well, they just did a survey asking, you know, about your participation in the grant and what would make the grant easier to apply for or more difficult to apply for. So my hope is they're going to offer a similar program again, and we will be watching and ready for that for next year.
I'm curious whether we receive the funding or not, if that's something we could consider as a district, what having a district-wide resource closet for hygiene products would look like.
I hope so. I've learned to manage inventory very well.
Maybe we'll get some volunteers.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, with the ending of the national emergency for COVID, which included some protections for like time off for illness, what, and this, this may be a larger question to you, Superintendent, what are some of the plans that we anticipate having in place next year to still protect and provide that gap of educational services when kids are out? Because regardless if it's COVID or not, we still don't want kids coming to school sick, and we want to maintain the support so they don't fall behind when they're absent.
Yeah, I mean, it's a great question. You know, I'll, I'll welcome them more formally, but we are joined with many of our union leaders today here. You know, one of the things that we've been able to work on is having a lot of protections for staff and students in terms of if they get COVID, being able to get time off that's not against them. Just because the federal government has kind of said it's not a national emergency, it, it doesn't mean that we can't continue to have those kinds of protections, both for staff as well as students. And I think that over the summer, I look forward to a kind of robust conversation of saying, what rules do we need to do to really protect students and protect all of our staff for that? Because just because the feds don't think it's an issue, we want to make sure, and we want to be very clear about this, if you're sick, we really want you to stay home, because you don't want to, you know, certainly spread it, but we also don't want you coming to work sick. But it's hard to come to work sick if you're not being taken care of those days. So we will definitely work on that. And, you know, I look forward to conversations with a lot of you in the back. So that'll be fun. So, great.
And we do have written policies about when parents should keep children home, even if it's not COVID. You know, things like a temperature 100 and over, if they have vomiting or diarrhea or those sorts of things. So we will continue that regardless of the status of COVID.
Wonderful. Any other questions, colleagues? All right. Thank you much.
Thank you.
We'll see you at the beginning of the year. Thank you. Next, this evening on our presentations, we have our budget amendment number two presentation. I will invite Mr. Lang and Ms. Adams to the table.
Good evening. It is evening now, even though you guys started earlier, but of course, we're presenting our second budget amendment, final budget amendment for the current fiscal year, for 2022, 23 fiscal year. And just to kind of give you a little recap of where we're at, when we brought the first budget amendment to you, and for those of you that are new to the board, you know, you saw this in January, that there's a lot of unknowns when the budget's adopted back in June of last year. So once we get into, you know, what state aid is, know when enrollment is, and some other things, that, that's when we do our first budget amendment to kind of get a better of ideas where our revenue expenditures are. And now with our final budget amendment for the year, we kind of shore up to get to where we think we're going to be spending for, to end the fiscal year. For those of you that are new to the board, our goal was to be, after our audit, to be within 1% variance or less of the, our budget. And we've done that now for how many, many?
Several.
Several, several years now, we'll just say. So that's, that's our goal. And on a, depending on the year, 160 million to 200 and whatever million-dollar budget with us, or is, you know, that's, that's pretty good accomplishment as far as where we finish up the year at. So just as a reminder of where we ended at the first budget amendment, we were planning to use about eight to nine million of our fund balance that we had projected in our budget adoption, and down to 36 million. And then for this budget amendment, we did some, we received some additional revenues, more on the expenditure side and reducing expenditures, shifting some things over to grant, is what they'll explain later. And we're actually going to be adding about 9.4 million back to the fund balance is where we're projecting to be at the end of the fiscal year. So again, that's just a reminder of where we are and what we're going to show to you here in the next few minutes. So revenues, local revenues, again, that's mainly property taxes that, as property taxes go up, we receive more revenues for that, for on the operating side, for the non-homestead. And then also, also in this higher interest rate environment, as the feds keep on raising their rates, we've done some additional investing that we've talked to the Board Finance Committee about, and putting some additional funds in investments. So we've had some additional interest revenue that we've received, and that's about, just about 1.1 million additional in local revenue there. State revenues, just shifting back and forth with some special ed between that and the ISD revenue, the reimbursements we get from the ISD, kind of almost washed out as far as what we lost in the state revenue, gain in the revenue from the county, from the special ed reimbursements, and then some additional funds in the indirect food service that we were able to claim. So about 1.1 million additional revenues we're receiving, projected to receive for, after the first budget amendment now, for revenues for this year. And Kim is going to talk about expenditure changes.
Good evening. I know this is your favorite part of the school year. We are much better than budget, but primarily due to two main factors. One, you see, we had some increase in expenses. One, you see, we had some increase in expenses, increase in outgoing transfers to capital projects, sub-teacher cost increases, and you can see them listed up there. But total increases to our budget of 8.7 million. And then the savings or the decreases, we shifted over 12 million, almost 13 million from our general fund budget into essers. And this is a one-time thing. So it's not like we will continue to have these savings. But we did transfer those costs in. And then we had about 4 million in open position. So we have a total savings to the budget of 17 million, which is offset against the 8.7 million in increases for a net savings of 8.3 billion. For an overview for our budget, we have a 36.1 million fund balance per Amendment Number One. We add in the 1.1 million dollar increase for revenues and the increase or savings in expenses of 8.3. So the total positive adjustments are 9.4 million. And in the end, June 30th, we expect our fund balance to be 45 million point five.
And I just wanted to put out, just a reminder, this is projected what we have now, our best information. We try to get as close as possible. But then when the audit is presented, we go through our audit and, well, we have a pre-audit in a couple of weeks, but our actual full audit in end of August and early September. That gets presented to the board in early November. You'll see some adjustments from there. So this will be the beginning fund balance for the budget adoption for next year that we'll bring to you in a couple of weeks. That's going to change in the budget amendment. You'll see that kind of shift based on where we end up with our final financial statements in the audit. So we've talked about that in the past, that there's just usually not that big of a shift, hopefully, if we do our books right, which we happen. But, so then in the First Budget Amendment for next year, you'll, we'll recognize that difference of what the adopted is for next year plus what the differences is in the actual audit statements. That's basically it.
Thank, go ahead.
And just to reiterate what we said is, first of all, I want to thank Kim and John for their presentation and for what they've been able to do. But, you know, when we originally came to the board at the kind of beginning of this fiscal year, we thought that we were going to be down, you know, seven to eight million. And now we're basically kind of broke even. We were probably plus, you know, one or two to get to the 45 million dollar fund balance. But I just want to, again, really be cautious because, as Kim said, this is one-time money, right? And what I'm really proud of is we didn't kind of, you know, the old Brewster's Millions movie. It's like, oh, you've got a bunch of money, let's just spend it. What we were able to do is, is save it by putting it into things that allow us to kind of bank it. Because the important thing is we want to make sure that we have enough money in perpetuity to increase salaries of our wonderful unions, to increase ongoing revenue. But just, we have to be very cautious that, you know, that 45 million dollar fund balance is because of essers, and we did. Now, I also want to really be cognizant of some other districts in Michigan and around the country. If you've been reading in the papers, firing 300 people, downsizing by 100 people, doing all of that stuff. We don't have to do that because we've been able to be more thoughtful about our budgets because we didn't put a ton of money into operational ongoing expenses. We were putting money into specific things like, you know, a dean contract or a SEDEXO contract or the curriculum contracts, things like that. So, you know, it is wonderful to feel like we are safe, which I think we are. But even in ET this morning, we were talking about how this is good, but like, we have to be careful. And so I really appreciate the cautiousness. I think you all know me, this is probably the only time where I will say I am conservative. So it is good to be conservative for this because we really do have to not only be good shepherds of the money for our district, but make sure we have enough money so that we can pay our people what they deserve and have enough equipment for our kids and faculty, so.
Thank you. I was just going to note, looking back at my notes from January, you warned us that there was a potential $10 million swing in expenditures we may see. And you were able to keep that down to 8.7 million dollars in a swing in expenditures and to an additional offset by using the one-time essers, which we recognize is going to potentially have to be accounted for in other years, but at least it allows us to have savings and collecting that savings this year. So just wanted to point out that I, I appreciate that. And this is the strongest fund balance that I've seen over my tenure. So certainly appreciate it. Any other questions or comments from colleagues? Ms. Liljy.
Thank you. I'm a big fan over here of your work. I just had a little question on the revenues page. The indirect revenues from food service, could you talk a little bit? Do we sell food? What, what, how do we get revenues from indirect from food service? That's what I wanted.
So we do sell food. We have à la carte, and the finance department contributes greatly. We get lunches from them every day. But that's not what the indirect is. The indirect on the foods, from the food service, we can claim up to 15% or whatever the current rate is on expenses, excluding anything over 25,000 that we pay to SEDEXO and excluding equipment. So pretty much everything else that we pay for directly, like the wages and benefits of our noon assistants, who are split 50/50 between general fund and food service, those count towards indirect. Anything we purchase directly, like supplies and materials, that counts as well. So we can charge the food service department an indirect cost that is a savings or a revenue on the general fund side.
Thank you for explaining that.
You're welcome.
Mr. Richardson.
Sorry, I was gallivanting around instead of being at the finance committee. Also, I have to acknowledge, I've never heard Kim not use a precise number until the 45.5 million. So that was, that was a treat for all of us. I, I may have missed it in my bewilderment of the rounded numbers. But can you run me through the elimination of the 51F? What, what is that specifically?
So that was special ed money we received last year. It was one-time funding that was done away with for this year. But I wasn't aware that it was done away with until after the First Amendment. So now we're fixing that.
So it ended up, it was never really our money. It's just a correction of a line item?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
And one thing just to add for really everybody. Anytime you see something like 31F or 31O or 51 ever, it, it's just the way that the state gives us this money. So I know, like, now I know all of these codes. I had never even heard of this stuff when I got here, right? But, but what's been interesting is to see certain things that the state is funding kind of every year and stuff that isn't. And so again, we have to be really careful, and I know our team is, is we get, let's say, 31O money. That was, we thought was going to be one-time. So we were like, okay. And now it seems like it's going to be two times and maybe three times. And so, you know, we're always probably going to see an adjustment on a couple of lines. The last one I will point out, which we didn't make mention, but, you know, I'm now going to pander to the audience here. There is headly, which is something that we probably have a conversation, not now, is that there are some interesting tax laws about how we are assessed our millage and things like that. And we don't have a headly override protection. So we actually get less than the 18 mils that we're kind of supposed to. And that's something that does hurt us in the long run. And I think at another time, maybe even for an ISS, we could have a kind of a deep dive into how that tax law changes. And of course, I would defer to John and Kim to explain it in much more robust language than I. But in essence, we're supposed to get 18 mils, but we don't. And that differential actually costs us a lot. So, thank you.
Just to add to that, next week at the, next week's board meeting, we'll be presenting the 4029s, which is the reports or the tax levels we have to have approved to be able to levy taxes next year. So we can discuss a little bit of that if you want to next week. Just, I mean, it could be an hours-long conversation, but I'll try and keep it to like just a couple of minutes. So, yeah.
Thank you. Just, just for the information, this report is not inclusive of, of any bond or sinking fund monies, right? Those are separate pots that are not reflected in this report.
Correct.
Thank you. Yeah, okay. Just for the record.
And just for the record, the resolution, the resolution that's in there in your board packet, it's actually you're approving the general fund and the food service fund. But still separate from the sinking fund and bond and all that, yeah.
Wonderful. Any other questions? Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
That brings us on to our report from Superintendent, Mr. Shuldiner.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. It is really wonderful to see you all. And thank you for, you know, just really a great year. I mean, I'm not going to do a kind of a year-end in review, but I want to acknowledge Sue and acknowledge the Health Department and acknowledge Cordelia for kind of just the great work that we've seen this year. You know, at the, you know, we have one, you know, graduation is this weekend, which is awesome, which I'll talk about in a second. You know, next week, you know, kind of ending of school, things like that. It's time to start to think about, you know, what we've all done here. But just to think about where we were last year, where we were, you know, wearing masks and we were still dealing with COVID in a really, really strong way, to just look at those numbers and see two cases in a week? I mean, that's just astronomical and incredible. So I just want to really make mention of that. I also just want to, you know, say thank you to, you know, all the folks that have done incredible work this, this year. But since the unions are here representing, I just want to acknowledge all the people in the audience and say thank you for all of your service and also for being here. Regardless of, you know, anything, I think that when we have robust conversations with, with union representation, with folks coming to board meetings, being part of, of our community, it's, it's really super important. And, you know, it's just wonderful to see you all. And I want to kind of acknowledge that you're in the audience. So thank you for that. The, the, you know, this weekend is graduation. That's kind of what I wanted to talk about. I think you all know that there's three district goals. One is an 85% high school graduation rate in four years, meaning that when you come into ninth grade, you graduate in four years. 90% attendance and of course, enrollment of 11,500. But graduation in some respects is the great barometer, right? Attendance is your daily temperature jack. It's, you're, you're checking the oil in the car. It's like, oh, how many kids came today? Oh, 85%. That's good, but that's probably 5% to 7% of kids choosing not to come. So you know like what's going on that day. Enrollment, enrollment is about, do families want to send their kids here? Because we have choice and we know that there's thousands of kids that live in Lansing and choose to go other places. And so when we see enrollment go up against demographic changes, right? I mean, if everybody leaves Lansing, it's not necessarily going to be possible that we're going to head 11,500. But when you look at demographic swings and you see that there's still thousands of families choosing to not come to the district, but now, let's say, we've actually stabilized and are actually starting to see a turnaround, that's saying, hey, parents are, are looking at and deciding that, that things are getting better. But the graduation, the graduation says, did, over the 13 years that you've been here, did it happen? And I am just proud that we've raised, we've, we've increased graduation by over six points from last, from two years ago, so our first year. It looks like things are doing much better, even this year versus last. But it's a, it's a, it's to commend the students, the families, the teachers, the aides, the secretaries, the paraprofessionals, the principals, everybody who was able to put in the work to do it. And I just want to say very publicly to anybody listening, anybody in the audience, that, you know, if you have a child that's graduating, if you're graduating, if you taught a child that graduated, if you were secretary of school of kids graduating, if you were, you know, any way, shape or form part of that graduation, it's, it's because of you. Nobody does anything alone. You know, there's a really fascinating book called Outliers by Malcolm Gladwell. And, you know, he talks about how we have this myth of the person whom does it all by themselves. And when you look at it, you know that that's just not true, right? He talks about Bill Gates, oh, self-made. What are you talking about? He was one of the only sixth graders in the world that had access to a computer and unlimited time on it when, when he was in sixth grade because his mother and the other folks at the PTA bought a computer and they were in Seattle where all this stuff was happening, right? And so he's talking about how it's the community that makes it happen. And I just want to be so thankful and cognizant that the community is what makes this happen. And so to, this Sunday, you know, please come, get your tickets. You know, we look forward to seeing you in the Lansing Center. It will be hot outside, but hopefully very crisp inside. And just to say how, you know, graduation is that great barometer for how we're doing. And I'm just very, very proud that that number is increasing. It looks like it's steadily increasing. And that's because of the work of the students, of course, the faculty, the aides, the secretaries, the principals, and the parents, the community. Because nobody does anything alone. And I just want to say thank you to everybody. And I look forward to seeing you all at graduation. I think that's it. I don't think we have, I know sadly, a did you know, unless we do. Oh, amazing. Ah, news to me. I love it. So.
We, we do have a video, actually. A couple of weeks ago, actually a month or two ago, our, some students from Everett went to Japan. And one of our media producers was able to go with them. And we put together a quick video. So, without further.
There were many things that I found interesting, such as the culture with the anime and the food. And I also just really liked the idea of going on a trip around the world.
I love how you can just look around and there's barely any trash or even like little wrappers, there's none of that around here. Even in super crowded areas where there's not many trash cans, it's really great that it's so clean. And I love how everyone is respectful and keeps to themselves for the most part.
We would actually be able to like go to Japan and actually experience the culture here and get to actually use what we learned in class in real life. Because you have to do a lot of that here with actually coming to Japan and having to interact with people.
My middle sister took Japanese, which immediately caught my attention because I was like, oh, I want to go to Japan so bad. And, oh, I, I love Japan. And when I finally got the chance to like take Japanese and be like a step closer to finally going to Japan, I like jumped at the opportunity.
The shrines, just in general, stuck with me. The natural beauty, the, I like how they managed to incorporate nature into the buildings themselves. It was very pretty.
The shrines are really cool. It's crazy to see like the amount of detail that goes into each sculpture like that we see, like with the warriors and Buddha and just like the granite, like the grand scale of everything and how, it just makes me think of how dedicated the people are to like maintain such things too. Nothing ever looks worn away. It's really interesting to see how they like upkeep everything. Just the safety of it all, I feel like, like back home in America, especially being like a feminine presenting person, you don't feel quite as safe. But here, I've never really felt like I was in danger at any point. Like, we're usually in groups, but even like when we go off on our own, I feel comfortable here. It just feels like they have a better grasp on how to take care of everyone.
And I think it was like, it was really amazing to see, like have a chance to see something that was so old and not completely like run down. That wasn't like half torn down or completely torn down like a lot of things are in America. So it was really nice to see and able to experience, like to be like step foot in front of like the giant Buddha and to be able to see it with my own eyes. It was something that people, however many years ago, like so many years ago, built or went to pray to. So it was, it was really nice.
I was pretty shocked of how Japan, like mostly Tokyo looked. And it was amazing, the city and just like the landscape it has. Especially the one place being the tech district. I was like very shocked seeing like stuff I usually saw like in animes and people like wearing cosplays or even like seeing anime stuff like on, on like the buildings or even like billboards and signs. I mostly liked the city places in Japan because they looked amazing, creative.
It was really fun to be able to go around on the trains and on the buses. And it definitely has had an effect on how people treat each other, I think, with having to be near each other so much. It's really nice to see how everyone respects each other's spaces just from that difference of transport.
So I feel like my takeaway is that I want to further my education in the Japanese language and maybe move here one day.
language and maybe move here one day.
Even though we had to wait three years, it was definitely worth it. I hope I can go again in the future. Even though this trip was really fast paced, it got me a really good sense of a lot of different parts of Japan, like Kyoto and, you know, the tech district, the fashion district. I love it all.
Thank you for putting that together. I also just want to make mention when the student said it was like three years in the waiting, COVID put a hiatus on it, so we just are thankful that we were able to do it and incredible response from their students saying how meaningful it was. And that's why we should engage in more travel and more friendships like that. Thank you.
Thank you. I would just like to suggest that we implement a board policy that anytime students have international travel, the board goes first just to vet it out, just to make sure it's safe and the kid will be good for the kids. I'm just kidding, that's wonderful. I'm glad they had that experience. That brings us on to our routine matters. First up this evening is our Personnel Committee report from Vice President Moore.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Madam President. Included in your packet this evening is our Personnel Report for Approval. I would first like to share with you, the Personnel Committee met on May 19th. We discussed seventh and eighth grade students that are being, that are in the process of being reassigned out of high schools. Meetings are being held to move teachers into open positions. We've got some great wins in the district, I'm really excited. We actually placed nine MSU students into paid salary positions, May 18th. Five-year students were offered mentor programs and central coaching staff that will work with teachers. Four-year students, we are actually, we will pay for them to finish their focus for their certification as they teach in the district. Those are wins. There are five grievances in process, all from LSEA. A couple special proj, well, one special project is happening. Time clock, there's a time clock system for assistance to approve time sheet accuracy and paper reduction. That's being piloted, that, well, it's also piloting a teacher and student, we're also piloting, excuse me, a teacher and student speaker system for all classrooms. Now on to our Board Personnel Report. We have 15 resignations and I want to make sure that I'm clear on this, Christina, I see that we have one resignation that served us at the district for 45 years, is that correct in our report?
I think it's done, there we go. That is the information, yes, that I have received from Human Resources.
Amazing, okay, so we've got 15 resignations and one individual served 45 years in the district, thank you for your service. We have 21 retirements, several individuals served 20 years or more, and then we have 30 years or more as well. We have seven new hire non-teachers and we have nine new hire teachers slash administrators. Madam President, that concludes my Personnel Report this evening.
Thank you. Any questions, comments? Ms. Liljy?
I just think something interesting sticks out to me about the service years of the resignations and retirements. It looks like folks are on one end of the spectrum or the other. Either they just started with us or they've been with us for decades. Does that mean that we're doing better with retention? I don't, I, I'd like to think that, but tell me if that's just what I want to see.
No, it's, it's a great question. I mean, I think that we should give you a lot harder data because I don't want to kind of speak out of turn, but you know, when you look at data across the country when it comes to folks in professions, especially teaching, you have folks that retire after 47 years or, you know, whatever, and that's amazing and awesome and thank you for their service. And then there are folks that, you know, start a career and go, hey, maybe this isn't for me and maybe it's on us as administration to make it better for them and sometimes they realize that it's not. So you do tend to see these kind of double curves when it comes to that. The only thing that really affected it, impacted it about a long time ago was there was a huge jump in people coming into teaching right during the Vietnam War. So if you look at some like historic data, things got a little skewed, but in general, that's kind of what you see is folks who start off in the career and go, hmm, maybe this isn't for me or maybe this is not the right district for me for whatever reason. Then when you kind of hit your stride, you stay and then you retire, you know, kind of 30, 40 years there. But we're happy to get you hard data in terms of seeing that, but that's a kind of trend around the world or around the country at least, yeah.
Mr. Richardson?
I wanted to know, we had talked in the past about exit data. Are we getting, there's, there's a pattern emerging as we see these month after month in a particular school. Are we getting exit data? Are people turning that in? I know it's out of our control whether they do it or not, but I think it'd be very helpful for this board to see exit data by school and figure out.
Absolutely, and I'll defer to Christina, but we do certainly do exit surveys and we try to gather as much as possible. Of course, it's, you know, voluntary, but I, actually, starting last year, we started to, I mean, just to show you the antiquated sense, it was all kind of PDF and it wasn't even searchable. Now at least we're able to look at that data, but I mean, Christina, you can certainly talk about it and I would love to actually present something over the summer to the board about patterns that you see.
Yep, so we're currently working on, we still have the antiquated system, so we did purchase Qualtrics and so we started that with our student and staff survey data and what we're looking to do is then put our exit survey into Qualtrics as well to make it an easier system to gather data and for staff who are leaving to fill it out because right now it's like a PDF. But we do have data, again, it's voluntary, we do collect it, we can compile it together and happy to present it over the summer.
Thank you. I, you know, people come and go, but it, there's a lot of teachers on that particular list than I'm talking about.
Absolutely.
Thank you. I am just going to note that my kindergarten teacher is on this retirement list and I happen to know that she is enjoying her retirement party at this very moment. And I cannot believe that I am sitting on the board and accepting the retirement designation for my kindergarten teacher, which is just amazing and I have to give her a big shout out. She actually taught myself and my brother and would have me back to read during March's Reading Month and pull out my old photos and work that she kept for 30 years.
Is that something about you?
Maybe I was just special. All right. All right, thank you for that. Moving on to Arkansas Agenda this evening, Arkansas Agenda includes the receipt and, I'm sorry, it, it includes the approval of our May 18th regular meeting minutes and the receipt and approval of our Personnel Report. May I have a motion?
Madam President? Oh, somebody's on fire.
Uh, Ms. Moore.
All right, Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approved the Arkansas Agenda as presented.
Moved by Ms. Moore, supported by Mr. Richardson. Ms. Richardson's not even a person, so how about Ms. Williams? Well, Ms. Richardson, it's just a member of the board, sorry about that. Supported by Ms. Williams, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Great, motion passes 9-0. That brings us to our action item this evening, which is the approval of the 2022-2023 Budget Amendment Number Two as presented. May I have a motion?
The Board of Education approves the fiscal year 2022-23 Budget Amendment. Number Two is presented, Madam President.
Been moved by Ms. Williams, supported by Ms. Liljy. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Great, motion passes 9-0. That brings us to our report from Secretary of Announcements. Dr. Rodriguez?
Thank you, Madam President. Sunday, June 4, 2023, high school graduation ceremonies at the Lansing Center and everybody has the schedule starting at 10 o'clock. Wednesday, June 7, adult education graduation at Hill. And it's a very good group to graduate from that program, then to attend that program on Wednesday. Thursday, Kavanaugh Elementary Family Fun Day in the Haug Island. Wednesday, June 7, Thursday, and June 8, hot day for the high schoolers. Friday, June 9, hot day for all students, last day of the school for the, and going to summer work. And next board meetings, our next board meeting, the ISS Board Meeting will be in this building at 6 o'clock, June 8. June 15, to be two different meetings, a special board meeting at the Administration Budget Representation, that is by law, will be at 5:30. And then the parents or the community can, can and talk about the budget. On the same day, June 15, regular board meeting at the Administration Building at 6 o'clock. That is the number they have, Madam President.
Thank you, and I hope that our board colleagues are merciful, that our ISS will be in this building this month instead of us traveling so that we can give our production team a break after having just put on graduation. So we're going to do that, keep, keep it here for this month. Any other questions or comments from board members? That brings us to public comment on non-agenda items, for which we have none, which brings us to, if, the public comment cards have to be turned in to our Board Secretary if you would like to register for a public comment, but if you would like to speak this evening, I'll acknowledge you. Can I get your card, please? You have three minutes to address the board whenever you're ready.
Okay, hello again. Unfortunately, I'm back today. I spoke with you guys about a month ago. My son did return to school. This would have been last week. I found out about some state testing that he did not take because we were not made aware the day that I took him in to do the testing. We left and witnessed the student that broke his clavicle and all the other things that I mentioned before, fighting, chasing another student and slamming him on the ground at the playground. And I reported these things to the principal. I was then told by Mr. Keck that please know the student that had incidents with your son will not be in attendance starting Monday, so I returned my son to school that Monday. Prior to that, I had correspondence between Ben and his response to the parapro request that I had back when I was trying to request a meeting in March was that yes, we can do that for you now for the remainder of the school year so long as we are, I want to be accurate, off the hook for litigation around the issue. Again, we are willing to do this, but as you could imagine, we would like some assurances. My concern is that the lack of communication, the lack of accountability and follow-through with the plan as is to make sure that my son is in school and safe and the student actually was returned to school and I found that out today when I came to pick him up and saw him standing near my son, which is not in any way congruent with the messaging that I received, is very concerning because it impacts obviously his mental health, but also the other students in the school and this is not the first incident where he has harmed other people. So my concern is what is the messaging for this other student? Is he getting the supports that he needs? Because obviously he's being put back into a space where other people have been harmed and that is extremely concerning. And like I said, the messaging that I received was that the student was no longer going to be there. The teacher was unaware that the student was returning today, the principal did not know except for that there's a meeting that's supposed to happen with the student and his parent tomorrow. But again, none of that was corresponded to me so that I could plan and prepare with my child, who has experienced very extreme mental health issues as a result and emotional health issues as a result of this student. So I would just urge leadership to be more congruent with what's being said, be more accountable. My son has not received any type of apology or statement or anything that he's missed 16 weeks of school and now he's back in school because of the doing of a lot, a lot of work on my end to work, try to work with the school. And then this is the outcome, is that he's still presented in a position where he's with somebody who has harmed him gravely. Thank you.
Thank you, and Ms. Sunshine Riddle, if you're available to stay around to, for us to connect to the other meeting, that'd be great, thank you. That brings us to comments from board members, any comments from board members? Mr. Lopez?
Thank you. I just want to report that yesterday, Board Member Kevin O'Nai attended the Michigan State University Upward Bound 2023 Graduation Ceremony. And this was hosted at the MSU University Club, hosted by Dr. Stephanie Anthony, College Access Initiative's Director. And I just want to point out our students who were there, nine of them, and first one I want to acknowledge is Jesús Isneros, Eastern High School. He will be attending Lansing Community College and then Michigan State. His major is business marketing or accounting. Next is Alicia Dominguez, Eastern High School. She'll be attending Michigan State University, major pre-nursing. Then we have José González, Everett High School. He'll be attending Lansing Community College and then plans to attend Michigan State University with a major in electrical engineering. Jessica Herrera, Everett High School. She'll be attending University of Michigan, major political science. Prasant Mangar, is that right? Help me out. Okay, excuse me. Anyway, he's at Eastern High School. He'll be attending Michigan State University, major computer science. Vulcan Pas, Pas, try it.
Ashazada?
I'll take that, Ashazada. Everett High School, University of Michigan, major computer science. Giovanni Sauceda, Eastern High School, be attending Michigan State University and his goal is to work in wildlife conservation. We have Natalia Velasquez Solis, Eastern High School. She'll be attending Lansing Community College and her major is undecided. From Everett High School, Tra Mai Vo, College Leola University, major in nursing. So these young people all went through the Upward Bound Program and they were, they were treated very well. The two speakers, Christina Bragdon and the other young man right here.
Jaron Robinson.
Yeah, you know him. Why don't you tell me a little bit of what you saw too? Okay?
Sure, yeah, it was, it was a great event. And the other speaker was Jaron Rogerson, Robinson, who is involved with the TRIO program. So that is a program that some people might be familiar with that helps students who are from underrepresented backgrounds, particularly first-generation college students, have access to college and be successful once they arrive. So that includes programs you might have heard of like the McNeer Scholars Program, for example. And so the Upward Bound Program is, has the same goal, except starting earlier. So as TRIO provides some of those services and outreach for first-generation students from minoritized backgrounds, once they arrive in college, the goal of Upward Bound, as I understand it, is to start those supports early so that students from those backgrounds feel college-ready. So it was excellent to be able to celebrate the students and learn more about the program. And, you know, I'd encourage anyone who is interested in learning more to, to look up what is really an excellent resource for, for students who are preparing for college.
Yeah, and one of the requirements is maybe that there's a first person to go to college from a family and there's about 20.
and there's about 20 other requirements. But for those that are selected, it's a great opportunity. And they're ready. Actually, they're ready for college because they've been in college throughout their high school career. So I just want to report and tell you that we're very proud of those students of ours and we'll see them again Sunday.
That's wonderful. Thank you so much to Ms. Lopez and Dr. Cavanagh for attending and reporting back. Any other comments from board members? Ms. Liljy?
I was just looking at the Upward Bound academic year staff. And I see two of the staff members are Everett graduates from two years ago, maybe. And they actually were in ELL program that my husband taught. They came when they were in sixth grade and he was their first teacher. And they've kept in touch with him and they're going to the movies this weekend. But every year around graduation time, they show up and they tell them how much they're appreciated. So just, you know, a big, kind of to piggyback on what Ben was saying about graduation and how important every person along every step of everyone's educational journey is, just that little reminder about how connected we all are and how these relationships that we make, sometimes they go on for a lifetime. And just, I know I'm seeing a bunch of educators sitting here in the audience and you're representative of, you know, a thousand of your colleagues that work here. And just want to thank you all for the work that you do every day, day after day, year after year, and how important it is.
Thank you. And as a reminder to our colleagues, that graduation again is this Sunday. Please make sure that you arrive in time for us to be promptly lined up for the procession. I'll know later than 9:45. That means you've got to have your regalia on and all that jazz. So if you're like me, Rachel needs to be there at 8:30. Got it. Any other questions or comments from board members? Ms. Williams?
First of all, I don't know if you all had a chance just to look at the statements that these students made. They are representing our district and they're powerful. There was one that just keeps resonating on me. He says, "Tell me," and I forget, "Teach me and I will remember." It's just resonating with me because then I have to thank Dr. Rodriguez for spending a little bit of time with myself and my son as a parent last week at the Quakers breakfast celebration. So thank you all for, at Eastern High School. It was only eight students. That was the smallest group they ever had. However, it goes unnoticed that they're doing this every month. Kudos to Mr. Mendez, Mr. Carruthers, Ms. Bates. They were really, they came in and the emails that I got afterwards just expounding on the relationship that they've seen the change. And my child goes without saying. So to all you educators, kudos to you because again, sometimes we forget, but you're teaching us. And so I'm going to remember that you matter just as much as my child and everybody else in his life. It takes a village. So thank you all for that.
Thank you. That brings us to adjournment. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I move that.
Madam President, I move that we adjourn.
It's been moved by Ms. Moore, supported by Dr. Rodriguez. This is a non-debatable item, which means all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Oppose, same sign. Great. Motion passes 9-0 and at 7:12, we are adjourned.